I'll call the meeting to order. The first item will be a moment of silent reflection if possible for all of us to observe. Thank you. Are there any matters of pecuniary interest that anyone would like to declare at this time? Counselor Ritzman, I understand you had one with item 5.4 from the in-camera session?
That is correct. I'm sorry.
Thank you, and it relates to a board, an outside board that you sit on?
That's correct. I'm a board member. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Item three is adoption of the minutes of the June 8 council meeting that have been circulated. Counselor Bunting and Counselor Vazalakos moving in seconding discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed if any, and that is carried. Item four is an adoption for an addenda to the agenda. And we have two items, item 7.17 and item 7 point, or 6.1. So Counselor Gaffney will move and Counselor Ingram will second that the addenda for today's meeting be adopted. All those in favor, opposed if any, and that is carried. Item five is a report of the committee of the whole in-camera session. And at the June 20th, 20, sorry, June 22nd, 2020, the following matters were discussed. Labor relations or employee negotiations, proposed or pending acquisition or disposal disposal of land by the municipality or local board, security of municipal property of the municipality or local board, and personal matters about an identifiable individual commuting, including municipal employees or local board employees, and labor relations or employee negotiations, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege. At the in-camera session, direction was given on all items. An additional item relating to personal matters about identifiable individuals was added to the agenda. Item six is hearings of deputations and presentations. And item 6.1 is a request for a delegation by Jesse Votary. And it is that Ms. Votary be heard regarding item 7.17, extended patios, summer musics, music barge, and street-side live requests. Moved by Counselor Burbak and seconded by Counselor Seven, that Ms. Votary be heard. All those in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. And Ms. Votary, I believe you're there on the line.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much. I wanted to thank all of the counselors and yourself, Mayor Matheson, for just taking this time. I know it was last minute. I wanted to express that I'm very thankful for our city and for the counselors that are voting to move things very rapidly during these challenging times and are executing things at rather breakneck speeds, which of course is an unusual challenge. And I appreciate that. I wanted to also express my thankfulness for the task force, at least conceptually, in that they are, you know, doing their best to raise some issues and to create some movement for us during these challenging times of business. I think the one challenge with the task force is that they have an awful lot of good intentions, which is wonderful, but as we know, that is what the road to hell is paved with. My specific concern is in regards to a lack of voices from specific sectors in relationship to some of the items that are being put forward. Solutions that are being designed for restaurants in particular, I don't feel have a lot of restaurant voices at the table. Each industry within our city and particularly within our tourist-driven city are affected differently. And I think the best possible solutions will come from our small businesses and from our entrepreneurs that are, you know, we're used to adapting and changing and putting forward unique concepts to adjust when faced with any kind of challenge. Currently, some of the decisions that are being made specifically in regards to restaurants feel a little bit like a mashing-the-keypad approach instead of dialing into each independent business need. And I understand also the challenges of that. Obviously, reaching out to each individual business is a challenge, but we're obviously in very unique times. When we begin to discuss the solutions to the challenges that we're faced with currently, and I think kind of always, we have to ask ourselves a number of questions. I certainly ask myself these questions regularly in business. You know, what is the cost of the solution? What is the adaptability or speed of implementation in regards to the solution? And of course, particularly from a city standpoint, what are the safety measures and accessibility measures that allow this to be a solution if possible? I think that the current boardwalk proposition, which is what I would like to speak to, I think it presents a number of challenges in regards to those questions. I also think kind of specifically that there is a similar, but much simpler and more changeable slash adaptable answer that is actually available to us. And my overarching question is, why would we make this harder and more expensive than it has to be right now? The boardwalks, of course, in concept are really wonderful. If this was a long-term solution, certainly I would be very, very inclined to give up the parking and to make our downtown more walkable. But my understanding of the agenda is that it's to be voted on only from now until this coming November, which is a very short-term kind of viewpoint on a solution that feels like it has long-term possibilities. The potential that we have with building, you know, constructing, paying for storing, installing, and maintaining these boardwalks is a question of cost. And it feels like we might be kind of throwing money down the drain. And at this particular moment in history, available funds are rather important and limited as well. If this is money we don't have to throw at this initiative to execute it, I think that it's counterintuitive to do so immediately. As both a business owner who stands to benefit obviously from this initiative and a taxpayer, I have concerns about the costs. I know there's two options on the table. One is that the city is going to pay, and the other is that the restaurants themselves would pay. I would like to put forward that restaurants likely can't afford to put forth any kind of capital investment at this particular moment. And I don't know the ins and outs of the city's finances, but I would guess that there's not a lot of extra funding to go around. If this is seed money from some sort of government initiative, which of course needs to be spent, I just think that there might be other options to spend the money on at this precise moment, even in relationship to a very similar solution. So spending the additional money, as I mentioned, on construction, storage, installation, and maintenance are all things that we could avoid if we went with a more cost-effective and more simple solution of merely taking up the spaces that are proposed to house the boardwalks and turning those with very little kind of separation, perhaps planters or even rope, we could turn those into patios. And that's where the tables could sit, which would then allow the through-traffic to continue on the sidewalk. And it would satisfy the accessibility piece as well as providing that additional space. It would be a more kind of malleable, more adaptable option, at least to start. I would think that probably the construction of these things would take about two weeks at least, maybe three to four, depending on how busy the construction companies are in the middle of the summer, which means by the time they're implemented, we're partway through July. And as we know, Mother Nature in Canada can be very unforgiving. We may find ourselves two weeks from now with a different scenario inside this pandemic, either with weather or with allowances that would then change our direction again. So an opportunity to implement something that could be, I mean, implemented as early as this afternoon if voted upon favorably to just set tables out. Most restaurants have tables and chairs that are not being used. They could be taken out each day for service and brought back in. It would be a net zero cost to everyone involved. So I think that that's something I would like to put forward as a possible suggestion as the first step. And should this layout work, then we could look at the investment into boardwalks and the city would then have time to consider it as a potentially long-term, maybe a five-year plan of giving this a chance. So I think that those are kind of my broad strokes as far as my concerns. I think the lack of adaptability in a situation that requires hairpin turns and quick thinking and fast action as we find ourselves in today, the solution presents a number of challenges that potentially should not just be voted as a yes or a no, but maybe as a phase one, phase two, step one without the boardwalks, and then following up adding those at a later date. I would like to put forward that there's probably concerns about safety. I know that there, you know, the thought is that if you put the boardwalk in, it will separate folks from the cars. Unfortunately, not the best driver myself. I have jumped a number of six-inch curbs in parking lots over the course of my young driving life. And I know that my car does not see a six-inch boardwalk as a barrier. So I think the visual definition is what is really important in this particular step. And I think as far as tripping hazards being a concern, which has been voiced to me as well, I think that the visual definition as well between the street and the sidewalk provides enough of a distinction to prevent that from happening. I actually had kind of argued in the opposite way of this for Market Square when they were considering putting the six-inch curb down the center. And I felt that it was the stone treatment that continued on through the square that would camouflage the curb that was the largest problem and that a crowd at a large event, which of course won't be happening anytime soon, but that that would also camouflage that six-inch curb and create a tripping hazard. In this instance, I think we actually are in the opposite position where because of the social distance space, it will be a very clear area and can be very clearly marked, I mean, as simple as a touch of, you know, temporary yellow paint. I think that that's it. And I think I've taken up my time and I very much appreciate you giving me this time to voice some thoughts and concerns.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll deal with that item on 7.17. Thanks, Ms. Votary.
Thank you very much.
Item seven is orders of the day. And item 7.1 is a resolution. It's a request for council consent for Huron Perth Public Health Acquisition of Property. And the staff recommendation is that Stratford City Council considering, consider adopting the following resolution regarding the Huron Perth Public Health Acquisition of the Clinton Site from the County of Huron. Whereas Section 52.3 of the Health Protection and Promotion Act provides that a Board of Health may acquire and hold real property for the purpose of carrying out the functions of the Board. And Section 52.4 of the Health Protection and Promotion Act provides that subsection three does not apply unless the Board of Health has first obtained the consent of the councils of the majority of the municipalities within the health units served by the Board of Health. And whereas the Board of Health for the Huron Perth Health Unit requests consent from the Corporation of the City Council, City of Stratford, to acquire the real property municipally known as the Health and Library Complex at 77722B London Road, Clinton, Ontario, from the Corporation of the County of Huron, persuasive to the agreement of purchase and sale. Therefore, it be resolved that persuasive to Section 52.4 of the Health Protection and Promotion Act. The council, the corporation, the city of Stratford hereby grants consent to the Board of Health for the Huron Perth Health Unit to acquire the real property municipally known as the Huron, sorry, the Health and Library Complex, London Road, Clinton, Ontario, from the Corporation of the County of Huron, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute all documents necessary with respect to such consent. Counselor Gaffney?
I'll move the resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Burbak, you'll second it? Discussion. If not, all those in favor. Opposed, Fenny? And that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.2 is correspondence from the Ministry of Natural Resources and Fishery, advising us that they'll be conducting Oral-Ray Bs vaccine bait distribution in the summer and fall of 2020. A map was attached to show the distribution area. And this is for the information of council. And they normally use the Stratford Airport as a staging ground. Counselor Vazalakos?
I'm just wondering if some of this information could be posted by Mike Bytes for the public to know. I know there was some conversation on social media a couple of years ago about people finding some of them and not knowing what they are or what to do with them if they encounter them or if somebody picks it up. So I'm just wondering if it could be shared through our different sites.
Ms. Thompson's made a note, and we will, we will do that. And we'll also let the ministry know.
Thanks.
All right. That's for the information of council. Item 7.3, Stratford Landfill Public Input Invited for June 2020. And the staff recommendation is that council consider any comments received. That the report on the Stratford Landfill Public Input Invited June 2020 be received for information.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Ritzman and Counselor Vazalakos. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.4 is a resolution for renewal agreement with Upper Thames River Conservation Authority. And the council approved the renewal agreement for the operation and maintenance of the R. Thomas Orr Dam, the John Street Weir, and the Stratford Avon River Flood Control Channel with the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority. And the mayor and clerk or the respective delegates be authorized to execute the renewal agreement. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Beatty moving in second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, Fenny? And that's carried. Item 7.5 is a resolution for increased hours for household hazardous waste collection. And staff recommendation is that the operation of three household hazardous waste events for the remainder of 2020 be held at the northwest parking lot of the Rotary Complex from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And that all future hazardous waste events be held at the Rotary Complex pending the outcome of the household hazardous waste events for 2020. And that should alleviate the traffic and concerns on Romeo Street for stacking of cars and processing. Moved by Counselor Vazalakos, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Discussion, Counselor Henderson.
They're probably already doing this, but just in case, I think we should make up a big sign and have it at the landfill to letting people, reminding people where it's actually being held and the dates.
Yes, and Mr. Delovick, I'm sure you've, you've been looking after that?
Yeah, through the chair, yes. We've already planned to have signs up. And then pending council's approval, we'll have signs made up with the location as well as the dates and times at the landfill for it. And just for council's information, the upcoming HHW was to hold the Saturday. We'll have a member of staff there Saturday morning advising the people that it's not being held. We'll do the social media, but at the same time, letting them know when the next one will be, when it is and the hours of operation.
Thank you. Anything further? All those in favor, opposed, Fenny? And that's carried. Item 7.6 is a resolution for the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Risk Management Services Progress Report, COU 20-086. And the staff recommendation is that the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Risk Management Services Progress Report for 2020 be received for information. Moved by Counselor Henderson and Counselor Ingram. Discussion. Not all those in favor, opposed if any, and that is carried. Thank you. Item 7.7 is a resolution for temporary access across municipal property for 30 Joffrey Street. And the council approved the request by the owner of 30 Joffrey to extend the temporary access across city-owned property to the end of August 2020. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Burbak. Discussion. Counselor Henderson.
I just had a question. So when somebody first applies for temporary access, a letter sent out to the neighbors. But when they ask for an extension, is a letter sent out again to the neighbors?
Mr. Delovick?
Yeah, through your worship, there's no letter sent out. This is done but through staff. We just, we allow these temporary accesses. A lot of times it's, you know, if people ask for it's for pool construction and things like that. In this case, the homeowner was advised that they're going across property. We provided the first access point. And then when it goes beyond the 60 days, that's when it comes to council.
Okay, Counselor Ritzman?
Just wondering to Mr. Delovick, does this require a damage deposit as well?
Through your worship, a damage deposit was already provided as part of the building construction when they took out their building permit for building a new home. We took out a damage deposit at that time. So there was no need to take out another one since we already had a damage deposit.
Thank you.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there anything further? If not, all those in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.8 is a resolution for the 2020 Summer Day Camp Operations. And the staff recommendation is that council receive the information in the report titled 2020 Summer Day Camp Operations, and that staff be directed to cancel city-run daycare day camps. That's called option one. And consider partnering with the YMCA of Stratford, Perth to deliver a modified summer camp program experience, option two. Counselor Gaffney?
I'll move both options.
Thank you. Secondary, Counselor Vazalakos? Counselor Vazalakos?
So I'd like to speak to this only because I am really unhappy about our inability to provide option one, but understanding why. But I think that we, I think it's incumbent on us as a city to work as closely as we can with a YMCA to deliver not only a modified summer camp program, but to as many children as is safely possible. Because I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk a little bit about equity in recovery. And we have an awful lot of children that are at home and an awful lot of parents who are trying to work from home. We have a lot of businesses recalling their employees, and they're doing so expecting that those employees will have childcare for their children. And I, we do have buildings that aren't being currently used that are large and spacious and could meet the guidelines of the health unit where possible to get as many children offered. We may not get a lot of uptake, but I would hate for a family to end up in financial difficulties because they're being recalled to work and they can't go back to work because not of not having a safe place to take their children. And I also know that children have been at home for a long time without a whole lot to do. And we are starting to see some of the negative effects in children of not having pure interactions or activities to do. And the longer the lockdown goes down and the lower that the risk is of transmission, the higher than the impacts of those other risks of the lockdown are on both families and children. So while I am in support of the two options together, I'm really interested in seeing option two be explored to its fullest potential.
Thank you. Counselor Seven, I saw your hand. Next, then Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. The first is just clarification. So the motion says to cancel day camps is option one. But am I reading right that option? I'm just reading, am I reading it wrong that option one is to run city day camps at a loss? Just wanted some clarification around that first.
Mr. St. Louis?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe Brad Herndon is on the line.
Sorry, Brad, if you're here?
Yes, good afternoon. Option one is to cancel city-run day camps and therefore partner with the YMCA?
Okay, thank you. So do we have, I understand, you know, in the report there are challenges, but I'm actually opposed to canceling the camps altogether. I just wanted to know if we had sort of, do we have any idea of what? Because I assume that we would run them probably at a loss based on the restrictions and things like that. But I'm just wondering if we had any kind of figures, what that would look like financially?
And are you, are you asking what the profit or loss would be to run a city day camp program?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so to run a city day camp program in this COVID environment, we are projecting a loss of $35,000. What that is generally based on is a reduction in revenue. So the success of a city-run day camp program typically is based on, one, the quality of the program, the quality of the staff, and two, on volume. So in any given week during the summer, we typically would register between 100 and 125 participants. In a COVID environment, we know that that would be very challenging to provide that volume of registration. So our thought was to make it simple. We have a collaborative partner waiting in the wings to work with us. Our contribution to that idea of providing still day camps in the summer would be that the YMCA could provide the program. And our contribution would be to support the finding of the facility.
Okay, thank you. And so am I, am I right in my understanding that if we don't run our own camps and we partner with the Y, that there would be a total amount of spaces would be less for camps? Is that right?
At this point, it's not known. The hope is that if some restrictions are lifted from the government, that we could secure as many facilities as possible and therefore register as many kids as possible. I know that the YMCA, like we would, are concerned with the recruitment of staff. So that remains to be seen, who they can secure as leaders and program leaders. So I think that would just be sort of the crystal ball, staff one. But certainly, I think facilities with government orders lifted, we could find facilities to increase registration and programs.
Okay, thank you for that. And I appreciate the report. And I would like to, I mean, further to Counselor Vazalakos' point, I just feel like the loss that we would potentially take is, as far as the city budget goes, so insignificant where I'm concerned that if, you know, one space or two space could make all the difference for a household to, to quite literally keep them from hitting the bottom. And so I would like to see the city camps try and operate this summer whatever the challenge is involved with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Ingram, then Counselor Vazalakos.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to contribute that having the YMCA running our, running summer camps for the whole city, nobody has to worry about the quality of the programming or the ability to provide it. So I don't, I don't know why we hesitate to let the YMCA have this program and help us out. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Vazalakos.
Thank you. So I just want to reiterate that we've been so focused on our economic recovery of businesses and of tourism that I do feel there has been a little bit of a slip in terms of what we can provide for our residents and for our families. And this is one thing that families do require to be able to carry on their work and home lives throughout the summer when school is not in session. And given that school has not been in session now for a number of months, families are really struggling, children are struggling, and parents are struggling equally. So day camps are a really big option for the summer, that, an important option that we need to be able to, to provide. So partnering with the YMCA, yeah, I have no issues partnering with the YMCA, but it does definitely reduce the number of available spots in camps over the summer. The YMCA generally runs their own program, and the city runs our own program. So there's two programs being meshed and melded into one, which again reduces the number of available spaces because you're going to be reduced again, then again, for social distancing and washroom capacity and all the rest of it. So I just, I would really like us to be creative in the way, coming up with ways to be able to provide programs and activities for our residents, our families, our seniors, our children, in addition to focusing on the economic recovery for all of our businesses and our industries.
Thank you. Counselor Vazalakos, and then Counselor Burbak.
I echo that about, I'm gonna go back to that. For every dollar that society spends on child care, you get $5 back in economic activity. So we're going to get out of, so not only is it good for our children and our citizens and all of the health reasons that are involved, it's also good, it makes really good economic sense to get, to have, to provide quality childcare. So my question is for, for Mr. Herndon. Do, do you think that the Y has the capacity to maximize the number of available day camps? to maximize the number of available day camps, spots that we can offer in the city if we collaborate between the physical space that the city has as well as, let's say, the administrative capacity of the Y to run the programs? In other words, can the Y come up with, come up with a plan to offer as many spots as is possible? Or would us have another program expand that?
So there's a couple of things, and perhaps I could first answer from the statement from Counselor Ingram, that the idea behind the city augmenting a program delivery from the YMCA is that we would help find as many facilities as possible. One, for a summer camp program to happen, which means increased availability of spaces in that program. Two, we do have casual staff that were to work with us this summer that have already indicated to us that they're still looking for work and that they are interested in working with the YMCA as day camp leaders. So we would also assist the Y in securing recruiting staff for the summer because we have those contacts. So certainly, this would be a joint effort to make sure, one, that the city of Stratford has as many program, day camp program spaces as possible this summer based on availability of staff, our contacts to staff looking for work, and three, on our, I guess, connection to facilities in Stratford. So not just our own facilities, but the potential for schools to be used. The city of Stratford recreation programs have always used schools. Jean-Sauve, St. Alice, and Hamlet were planned to be used this summer. And there is an indication that if government orders are lifted, that that may be a potential to work with the school boards to also use their spaces. So I guess in whole, yes, we just want to augment the day camp program operation and registration capacity this summer with the YMCA, and that would be our contribution to that.
Counselor Henderson.
I had a question. Someone asked, how can the Y run camps without a deficit, not the city?
Pardon me?
How can the Y run camps without a deficit, not the city, was the question asked.
I'm not sure what the budgetary figures would be for the YMCA. So I'm not sure if that's an accurate statement or not. What we know is what our financial figures are to run or not run a day camp program. So I don't think I would be comfortable answering that on behalf of the YMCA.
Does the Y normally use our buildings when they do their day camps?
They do not, although that is an option if they wish to do so. I believe that they run their day camps out of their main headquarters. And I believe actually that's the only site, if I'm not mistaken. But they do have other plans this summer with government orders released to expand that.
I have Counselor Vazalakos, Counselor Ingram, or sorry, Counselor Burbak was next, I believe, then Counselor Vazalakos, then Ingram. Sorry.
Thank you. Actually, Counselor Vazalakos asked the exact question I was going to, but I just wanted to add my support to the idea that we do really need to provide our families with some sort of day camp capacity. So I would like to really see it as a partnership, that they are city camps that we are doing with the Y, that we would be able to offer as much support as possible, including staff. So that was, those were my thoughts.
Counselor Vazalakos, and Counselor Ingram.
So I want, just in terms of the financial ability for the different organizations, municipalities do not qualify for the wage subsidy that the federal government is offering. But it's my understanding that the YMCA probably does qualify for that. So from that perspective, being able to offer, by us helping the Y find spaces and locations and outdoor spaces that the city is involved in, we could support, but also keep the price down for families that are, that the day camps. In other words, a large part of the day camp is, especially as the ratios are gonna need to be smaller and the kids are gonna be hoarded. I'm assuming that staff costs are gonna go up, and if it's an organization that qualifies for wage subsidies, we, we could be helping increase the number of spaces just from that perspective. Am I correct? Is that my correct reading of it? Because we don't qualify.
That's correct. Counselor Gaffney, I see your hand, but we have a couple of people. Counselor Ingram.
I'm okay now, thank you.
Counselor Gaffney.
Thank, thank you, your worship. I just want to point out that the YMCA's Strong Kids Campaign, which raises money in the community to help subsidize summer camp programming, and, and nobody, no matter the circumstances or the need, gets turned away from the YMCA. If somebody shows up there during camp registration, they will not be turned back at the door. And it doesn't matter whether it's their regular troop of kids, plus the city's troop of kids coming in this year. The YMCA's will take care of them. Thank you.
Counselor Seven.
Well, I just wanted to, I guess I'm just having trouble understanding that if, if we, if by collaborating with the YMCA in the way that's being proposed, we are able to provide more spaces to more residents' children at a lower cost, then why is, has that not been something we've been doing all along when that is the case? I'm just, I'm just, I'm just have a hard time understanding why, if we, if we get rid of one program and mesh them together, that it would be possible to provide more spaces that way? I think, I think I'm not alone in wanting the most spaces possible. And I just, I just don't know why the, I understand the subsidy, but I just don't know if why we have staff that are saying they're looking for work, why we wouldn't use those staff for our own programs instead of referring them to the Y is the other part of that.
Mr. Herndon, I'll give a chance and a little bit of an explanation, Counselor Seven. In the past, ours has been focused throughout the city using school board properties, and we've run a program. There was another program run in conjunction with the YMCA that had a little bit different programming put into it and used the Strong Kids program as a way to subsidize some of those spaces. In this case, because of the school board properties not being permitted to be used for public activities, it has put us at a little bit of a default this year. And with the availability of the subsidy for a not-for-profit group over the municipality, conceivably, the same number of kids, if not more, could be helped this year between the two programs. Maybe not as diverse a number of sites as we would like, but at least helping the same number, if not more, kids for less money and just transitioning people from employment with the city to employment with the YMCA, which is a not-for-profit that qualifies for the subsidy.
Okay, so those are the changes from last year's. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Herndon, did I miss anything?
You did not, no.
Thank you. Counselor Clifford.
I was just gonna ask, are the camps starting July 1st? Or what kind of, what kind of projected date are the camps starting at the Y?
Mr. Herndon.
I believe their intention is to start camps on July the 5th. They, it's my understanding that they are taking pre-registration. I'm not sure if they're taking money, but certainly taking promises for spots in camps. But that may have changed over the course of the last few days.
Counselor Seven.
Yeah, I just wanted to just note that I support the motion knowing that the most spaces that we can provide will be provided.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Gaffney and seconded by Counselor Vazalakos. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Thank you. Item 7.9 is correspondence. It's requested designate 265 St. David Street pursuant to an LPAT Local Planning Appeal Tribunal decision provisionally approving the severance of 265 St. David. With the owner of the property has submitted a request to designate the retained portion of 265 St. David under the Ontario Heritage Act. And the correspondence is that council approved, or sorry, that the correspondence from Baker Planning Group on behalf of the owner of 265 St. David Street, requesting a heritage designation of 265 St. David Street be received, and that the request be referred to the Heritage Advisory Committee for their review and consideration. Counselor Ingram moving. Counselor Burbak seconding. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thank you. Item 710 is a resolution to refund of bed and breakfast licenses for 2020. And the staff recommendation is that the information provided in the report titled refund of bed and breakfast licenses for 2020 be received, and that council provide direction on which option to proceed with. Counselor Beatty. Counselor Beatty.
For your worship, I would just support the resolution.
Okay, we need a mover, a seconder, and you have to pick which options. So I just need to... Counselor Burbak, I saw your hand. Next, did you have a preferred option?
I was just seconding that we were gonna put it on the floor and discuss it, but I see I need to pick an option first. I definitely think that refunds are important. I'm a little confused about the very last option, which is partial refund continued operation. I didn't quite understand what that means. So maybe some explanation from staff, how that differs from the option two above it, I think. Or the option directly above it. They seem almost the same to me, and it was confusing.
I would ask a staff member to come forward, would be best. Mr. Delovick, could you maybe walk us through the options?
Yeah, through your worship. What we were looking at is whether we allow them to operate or not operate, and do, do we give full refunds or just partial refunds? So, so I said the full, the first option was full refund, even though we've expended some staff time for some of the license applications, we would just refund everyone that didn't want to continue with the operation. For those that wanted to, we did hear from a couple of operators that were considering continuing on for the year. They would keep their licenses, and we would keep the, the application fee. The other one was full refund continued operation. I think this is in recognition of, even if they wanted to operate, their numbers could be way down this year. And, and to help that sector out, we would refund their, 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 their application costs to the city and allow them to maintain their licenses that have been issued to licenses so they could continue to operate, but they would have to follow what's in the license requirements. They would need the liability insurance and everything else that goes along with being a licensed facility. And then, again, to recognize, if they didn't want to operate, do we keep some money for the work that we've, that has been involved for an administration fee? So for those where we have issued the licenses because we've had to go out to inspect, we'd keep $50 for the other ones where it's just been paperwork. We would keep $35, and then refund the less. And finally, we would, we would keep the costs that we've incurred to date, depending on the licenses, if we issued it $50, or if we have the $35, and then allow them to keep their licenses that have gotten their licenses. So they don't get a full refund, but they get a significant portion of their application fees back to recognize once again the, the challenges that may be in operating a B&amp;B during this time. So those are the four options there.
Right. Counselor Burbak, out of that explanation, did you have one that you were wanting to move then?
I would support the full refund and then allowing those who have a license to operate within the bounds of that license. That's what I'd like to see.
So you'll move that, and seconded would be Counselor Beatty. I see Counselor Henderson, Gaffney, Vazalakos. Okay.
So if we went, I think that's option three, full refund continued operation, the one we're talking about. If we went with that, I'm not sure how this works. So each year, B&amp;B put in and apply for a license, and they follow all the regulations. If people don't apply for their license, can they still apply the next year? Even if we decide to do it, say, say somebody doesn't want to bother to go through with all the paperwork because they're not gonna be operating this year? Are you allowed to skip a year and not have a license?
For your worship, yes, because I know one of the questions that come through staff with respect to some of those that are legal non-conforming. But from the staff's perspective and planning, yes, they can, if they don't get their license this year or they don't operate, they can operate next year. But I think with Option 2, in effect, we're allowing them to have their license. They're just getting their, their money back. But from a staff's perspective, they operate, you know, we'll assume that they operated this year, and it'll just be the usual license application for 2021.
Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, to the, for the Director of Infrastructure. There are some statutory requirements on, by the city that have to be performed. And I'm asking for my own education and for anybody else. Some of these things are yearly, are they not?
For your worship, these are all yearly licenses. It's usually early in the new year that we get the applications done. And as noted, we got more than half where we got the inspections done. There's still some that we haven't got finished. Now, if some of those ones where we haven't got finished and they want to operate, we'll go and complete the inspections and then ensure that they have their full license so that they can operate for the year legally.
Yeah, okay, so, yes, and I guess I was asking the question just to get a handle on protecting the city in case of liability. So we're still doing the inspections that have to be done, whether we're getting paid for them by the, by the operator or for absorbing it.
Yeah, through your worship, if Option 2, that's been moved, is approved, that's how we would do it. And then if there's any of those applicants that are in the 24 that, yes, we do want to operate, can you come and inspect? We will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Vazalakos.
I'm wondering if I could amend that to say that only those that are currently in the pipeline, so those that have already been approved or those that could be pending inspection, are offered this? I just, I just think that there is a cost to the, to us for doing the paperwork and the inspections and the applications and, and all of that. And given the fiscal pressures that we have, I think extending this to current operators or operators that were planning on, on, on operating for the season is appropriate. I just don't want to add too, too much additional work if any other applications come forward.
The mover and seconder, do you agree to that amendment? It's Counselor Burbak and Counselor Beatty.
Possibly, but how then do those, if people decide after, you know, a couple of weeks or whatever, that they want to start operating? So do they then pay full bore? Or are we gonna give them a reduced rate, just for fairness?
For your worship, my understanding of the motion is it's just those 71 applications that we received and not any new ones. And to be honest, that is probably all of our normal operators. When I look at the revenues for this year compared to previous years, these are, these are the normal operators that we have making the applications. So we don't anticipate any other applicants coming forward.
Okay, with that in mind, I'm willing to make that amendment.
The seconder agrees to it, and the clerk, you've noted that? The clerks noted the amended motion. Anything further, Counselor Seven?
And just further to Counselor Burbak's question, if somebody did want to operate, though, they could come forward and pay the full fee. Is that correct?
Through the chair, all of the applicants have already paid the full fee. So when you look at the 71 applications, they've already all paid the full fee. It's only 47 of them got, got, got through the final process and said, yes, you're good to go. And we were still working on the other 24 at the time, but things were, were closed to the province. So there wasn't much point in continuing on to finish off those applications, especially when we started getting operators asking, I want a refund now.
Okay, so, thank you. And so I guess what I meant was if somebody new wanted to come, or is, or is there a deadline that's already passed? Or if somebody wanted to start operating a new B&amp;B or something, would they be able to apply at this point?
Through the chair, my understanding of the amendment to the motion is that we wouldn't accept any more applications. We would just deal with the 71 that we received.
I would. I would, okay, thank you. I would almost like to see the option if somebody, I mean, not for, not to have the fee waived for any applicants, but if they wanted to pay the fee and make a new application, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
Thank you, Counselor Seven. Counselor Ingram, and I saw Counselor Vazalacos hand again.
Thank you. Is there a cost to the city to provide all of these refunds?
Ms. Baroness?
There will, through your worship, there will certainly be some admin costs. We'll have to issue checks and mail them out, so probably with checks and envelopes and postage, et cetera, it might be less than $5 an application.
With that in mind, with that answer, I'm actually of the opinion that, you know, there was staff time incurred in the beginning to issue the licenses. There's going to be staff time plus a small amount of additional costs to provide the refunds. I'm, it's just my opinion, and I know there's already a motion on the floor, but I would actually prefer the partial refund continued operation option, just to provide, I mean, we all know that the city's finances are struggling, so it's not as though we're trying to, I just don't want to see us make a decision that completely cuts this city out as well. We're trying to help out this industry, but we also have to keep in mind our own finances.
Counselor Vazalacos.
I was just, I was thinking a little bit about, because what we're dealing with today is refunds for existing applicants, but the other part was workload for staff. There's a, and so I can understand Counselor Seven's, maybe if a new operator would want to come along and stuff, but we do have additional pressures in all of our departments with reduced staff to deal with COVID and all the other things. And so I think when we're in a position where we're just trying to stay afloat, I think it's best to keep everything as simple as possible and just leave it as dealing with the applications that we currently have.
Thank you. Counselor Clifford, and then Counselor Henderson.
Yeah, I was going to ask, instead of a refund, is it possible to have it for 2021? That way, we wouldn't have the cost, but if they, if they were hoped to continue, if they could have it for 2021 instead, and we don't actually pre-fund it, but we can apply it to next year?
Noted. I think the challenge would be keeping a registry of both, and whether or not some would want an option because of cash flow this year, but I understand. Counselor Henderson?
Yes, I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. There's five options on the table. I heard Ed say number two, but I think it's because there's just four showing on this page, and we're talking about option, what I call three, the one that's full refund continued operation. And just, I wanted to comment on Counselor Clifford's comment. This is the year everybody's really hurting, and who knows if they're even going to operate next year, because this year might determine whether they can even afford to operate next year.
The option on the floor right now, and just, I'll read it back, it's been a friendly amendment to it, is that the full refund continued, full refund and continued operation, to provide a full refund and maintain licenses to allow those operators that may continue to operate to help offset additional costs that may be incurred. The condition set out in this license would need to be followed. And that this option only be applicable to the applicants for 2020 received to date. Counselor Seven?
So, so just for clarification, this motion doesn't necessarily exclude any new applicants, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then I support the motion, the option on the table, and I'm just happy to see that new applicants would be able to come and if they wanted to pay, so.
Anything further? All those in favor of the motion? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Thank you. Item 711 is the Stratford Lions Pool operations. The council received the information in the report, and that staff be directed to cancel the Lions Pool Aquatics program from the 2020 season. Counselor Seven?
I just had a question about the finances. Is there an estimated cost that we incur as a city without opening the pool? Just the numbers are high. I assume some of the expenses are incurred regardless. Is that right, or is that completely only if we open the pool?
Mr. St. Louis?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have some minor costs in terms of hydro, probably some water usage, but that's about it.
Thank you. Okay, so I, okay, so then $60,000 extra is, that's the projected to open it. So that's all for now. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Vazalac, or sorry, I believe I had Counselor Burbak, then Counselor Vazalacos, Counselor Ritzman, that order.
Thank you. Sorry, my internet's kind of cutting it out again, so I'm hoping you can hear me. I'm just wondering, I don't really like the idea of not running the Stratford Lions Pool program, and I'm wondering if we could be a little bit more creative about finding a solution that perhaps would be more cost-effective, but would still be safe. I know that on the report, it suggested that it would be an eight-week program. Would there be an option to possibly make it a six-week program with reduced staff, and we can modify the way that the change rooms are used? You know, entry via the change rooms, exiting via the gate. I mean, there's a lot of different ways that we could do it to make it work, and I do know that other communities around us are planning to open their pools, and they are looking for creative solutions that will make it safe and that will make it work. Because we've heard from a lot of people that the pool is a really important program for them, especially if they're at home without any access to other recreational activities. I think it's vital as a community service that we try our best to offer a safe option at the Lions Pool.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Vazalacos, and then Counselor Ritzman.
I'm going to agree with Counselor Burbak. I mean, we have, there are a lot of people who have contacted us, so obviously, but, but the other piece of it is, we don't have a lot of outdoor activities that children can do or seniors can do. So sort of activities, I was thinking, you know, the aquafit, the lane swims, some of the, not so much the lessons for children, because I realize those are quite problematic from the contact perspective. But, you know, we do have the splash pad that's open, and that's great for moving small kids, like really young kids, but my concern is if we don't actually distribute that population across two facilities, we are going to see crowding at the one, because we're not allowing for another option. And also, there, we do still have a lot of families, a lot of seniors, a lot of people that live in apartments or condos that do not have access to outdoor, you know, yards, or even pools in their backyard or things like that. And so, again, this goes back to the, it's going to be a long, hot summer if we don't have some options. And I'm also thinking about, you know, are there ways that we can get some sponsorships around keeping the pool open? Are there, is there anyone, you know, have we considered maybe that there would be some donations to being able to keep it open this year and available to the community? It's just, it seems to me like, you know, there is a little bit of an equity piece to that, that, you know, if families don't have access to the beach, or to a cottage, or to a lot of those things, then what do they have that we're offering?
Thank you. Counselor Ritzman, Counselor Clifford?
Just a question, and I maybe goes to Director St. Louis. Did we complete the repairs on the liner in the shallow end?
Through the mayor, yeah, the repairs are complete, and we are ready to do a test scheduled for this week.
And just a follow-up question on that. What was the cost of those repairs?
$100,000. Through the mayor, it was $120,000.
And so to that end, I concur with both Counselor Vazalacos and Burbak. I believe we should do something to allow our families to utilize that investment in the Lions Pool. Thank you.
Counselor Clifford and Counselor Ingram, follow.
Yeah, I was going, I read the report. If the change rooms are a problem, is it possible to have, and I went online to look what other municipalities are doing, if the change rooms aren't available, is it possible to open the pool, and have you come with your, like, your swimsuits on as you come? So I'm asking if that's a possibility.
Mr. Herndon?
Through your worship, it is possible to have patrons come dressed or ready for swimming. They do need to shower before, and it's recommended after swimming. We would also need to provide washroom facilities for public, so those would be the two operational realities that we would still need to make sure occur.
Counselor Ingram, and then Counselor Henderson.
Thank you. I have a few questions for staff. So knowing what we now know about the upcoming school year, is it possible for, for us to be able to provide some sort of pool options late into the afternoon or evening hours in September, and therefore extending the pool season?
Through your worship, there obviously are operational and weather considerations going into September. Also, would we have enough staff to continue through into September? So those would just be question marks. I'm just throwing them out there. Typically, we would, in a COVID year, so this year, we're looking at about a $32,000 a week cost in operations. So that can give you some perspective. If the season were to continue one week, two weeks, three weeks, weather-dependent, it would be about $32,000 to do that.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I think, given that we know a lot of universities are moving to online classes in the fall, and then our public and secondary school systems are going to be probably a combination of both in-class and online learning, I think there's some opportunities there, and if we're willing to, you know, think about it and perhaps promote it, it could be successful for this year. The other, the other couple of questions that I have is, would it be necessary with the decrease in the numbers of members of the public using the pool to have the regular 35 staff members available?
Through your worship, in the report where it describes the 2020 season in an eight-week operation under COVID restrictions, that is actually based on 20 staff members, not 35.
Okay.
So for us to operate the pool successfully, we would, we would probably need a staff complement of minimum of 20.
Okay. And then lastly, we've, we've heard in our emails that we've been receiving, or many of us have been receiving lately, about the pool from members of the public, that they would be willing to pay increased fees to offset some of these costs. Is that something that staff has looked at?
Certainly, we can increase the fees if there's an appetite for that at council level. Right now, a single-admission swim starts at $3.50 and goes up to $15, depending on whether it's for a child or family.
Okay, well, depending on what comes out of this, this motion that is yet to be put on the floor, that may be something that, that we should look at.
Certainly, we could produce examples or models of what that looks like from a financial perspective.
Counselor Beatty and then Counselor Burbak.
I'm not excited about the possibility of having the pool canceled for this summer either, but it's outweighed, in my thoughts anyways, of the risk associated with this. My thoughts are simply that, and I think about young children, and best intentions of making sure that they do all the right things in order to stay well in confined spaces of a change room and showers, and as I say, I'm just, my concerns are outweighed by the risk versus the unfortunate situation of having to have that pool closed. So I would support the staff recommendation.
Counselor Henderson, and then Counselor Burbak. Correct?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So we've already passed a motion that for youth bus pool, and I forget the other one, wouldn't be increased over the next three years. So I wouldn't support increasing a fee, because a lot of these families that basically aren't going to cottages or having pools are probably having a hard financial hit along with other people. What I wanted to ask was, I can't remember, the accessible area that we set up, right now, do they come to the front desk, and then they go down, somebody lets them in the gate? And another part of that question is, is there a washroom in that accessible change room? I'm just wondering if we can't use that as sort of, I know it would take a bit longer for people to get in and out, but if, or it could be added. I guess we have to keep it, because people come with accessible issues. I just wondered, does it have a washroom, and is it a possible way to use it that would be easier to sanitize? I'm not sure.
Through your worship, so in answer to your question, Counselor Henderson, the accessible washroom, which you're referring to, which is on the west, west point of the building, yes, it's accessible. Most patrons that use that washroom from the outside in would come through the gate to use it, because there's an accessible pathway to do so. And of course, when those patrons are within the facility, certainly that it's accessible from within the facility to get to that washroom as well. In terms of ease of cleaning, certainly it is an easier clean, that accessible washroom, than the interior changes, which are 85 years old, as a counselor had mentioned.
All right, Counselor Burbak, your hand, if you'd just speak.
Yes, thank you. Just a word about the fees. If we did go ahead and we had modified type of programs where people were possibly restricted to a certain amount of time, I think that, you know, perhaps compared to the fees that we would normally be getting, if people are paying the same fee for less time, we're already giving a fee increase in a way. So I would, I'd like to make a motion that staff be directed to come up with a plan to open the Lions Pool, a modified plan, that would look at restricting the use of change rooms and other areas where we're concerned with the spread of COVID-19, and that we would plan for perhaps a shortened season that may include extending it into the fall.
If I could, consult with Ms. Thompson. I think the appropriate motion would be that the Lions Pool be operated for the 2020 season, and that staff come back with an operation plan and financial arrangements for such. We can have a special council meeting this week to approve all of those. Okay. All right, so Counselor Burbak will move that, and Counselor Ingram would second it. I think the intent would be then staff will know they're opening it, so they can start the maintenance side of it, and then we can sort out the operation duration and logistics over the next number of weeks. Okay, all right. Counselor Vazalacos?
I was just going to say, since we're online, if there happens to be any business in town, or anybody who happens to be doing well, and wondering about grocery stores, then maybe we could look for some sponsorships to get some, to get this, this city facility that's open to everyone more affordable.
Thank you. Any else? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? One opposed, and that's carried. Opposed, if any. One opposed and that's carried. Thank you. Item seven twelve is a resolution with the management report for the financial update for COVID-19, June 2020. Is there a mover or a seconder? Councillor Vasilakos and councillor Burbach moving and seconding discussion. If not all, oh, councillor Vasilakos?
Just a reminder that the federal and provincial government haven't come up with any help from municipalities yet. And this is the size of the hole that we're in because of COVID.
Duly noted. All those in favor? Opposed, if any. That's carried. Thank you. Item seven thirteen is Transit Accessible Bus Shelter Tender Award. And the staff recommendation is that council approve the low bid from ISACOM Inc. in the amount of a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-three cents inclusive of HSD for the supply and installation of accessible bus shelters that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the necessary contract agreement. Councillor Ingram and councillor Beatty moving and seconding discussion. Councillor Henderson?
Yes, I looked these up. I'm wondering if the one at Seven Maple Street, have the homeowners been told about that? Because I'm wondering, is it gonna be right in front of their house? Because it's the only one that I see is in front of a house. And my second part of the question was, it says Willow at Willow, no pad required. Where is that? Willow at Willow.
Mr. Mosley, if you're on the line, if you could, you could start with Willow at Willow. And I believe the second, the first question with regard to Maple, it is in the city right-of-way with regard to its location?
I know.
I, I know, but, and I'll let him answer whether or not he's notified anyone. Mr. Mosley?
Yes, through your worship, at Seven Maple, I have had a conversation with that resident that lives there. The Willow and Willow is actually at the bend at Willow, at the walkway that goes over to CH Meyer.
Thank you. Anything further? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Item seven fourteen is a resolution with regard to Community Transportation Pilot Project, June 2020 update. And the staff recommendation that the June 2020 Community Transportation Pilot Project update be received for the information of council and that the city sends a joint letter with the county of Perth, the municipality of North Perth, and the town of St. Mary's to the Ministry of Transportation on behalf of council, formally requesting an extension of the Community Transportation Pilot Project timeline past March 2023. Councillor Sebent and councillor Ritzma moving and seconding. And Mr. Mosley, do you want to just explain for people listening why that extension is necessary as it relates to MTO approval for inner-city bus operation?
Actually, through your worship, I think Stephanie was also on the line. Stephanie, are you able to answer that?
Certainly, through your worship, we have had conversations with our partners as well as with Voyago with respect to the ongoing pandemic and the challenges it's presented with respect to launching the transit service at this time. And everyone's agreed that it's, it's not an ideal time. We are working with the service provider to keep the project moving forward. Unfortunately, we are not able to obtain a license at this time because the members of the Ontario Highway Transportation Board are not working in the office and they're not able to process applications while working out of the office. And they're not able to provide a timeline for when they will be back in the office. We also do have some concerns with a potential second wave of the virus impacting our ability to continue on with the pilot project. We expect ridership and revenue would be impacted by ongoing shutdowns and that potential riders would be hesitant to use public transportation to move through inner cities before a vaccine is available. The other community transportation pilot projects are currently on hold as well in all the other communities that have retained Voyago to provide their service. Tilsonberg is looking to launch as soon as possible, but they will be doing so with social distancing measures and only selling a limited number of seats. So Voyago will be keeping us informed of Tilsonberg's project if they are able to launch the service. And we will continue to work to get the project ready to move forward as soon as we're able to identify a potential launch date.
Thank you, Ms. Potter. Any questions with regard to that background information? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Item seven fifteen is reopening of childcare in Stratford, Perth and St. Mary's. And the staff recommendation that the report reopening of childcare in Stratford, Perth and St. Mary's be accepted and that delegation of authority by law one thirty-five dash two zero one seven, as amended, be further amended to delegate authority to the director of social services or the chief administrative officer to enter into a memorandum of understanding with licensed childcare operators as they reopen. Councillor Henderson and councillor Gaffney moving and seconding discussion. If not all in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Consulting services for the Huron Street Construction Project, item seven point one six. The staff recommendation is that IBI Group Professional Services Inc. be retained for the consulting services for the RFP 2020 dash twenty-nine Huron Street Reconstruction for four hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-six cents, including HSD, that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the contract. And to remind everyone, this is part of the MTO's recent announcement and they are funding this in preparation of construction for 2021. Councillor Ingram moving, seconded by councillor Vasilakos, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item seven one seven is extended patios, Stratford Summer Music Barge and street-side live requests. And the staff recommendation is that patio extensions and boardwalk installation program be approved to permit the extension of patios over the sidewalk space adjacent to a restaurant and that the installation of a boardwalk, a wooden causeway over municipal parking spaces for the 2020 patio season until November first, 2020. And that applicants be required to submit all necessary paperwork and drawings to the clerk's office, enter into an outdoor café agreement with the city and comply with the provisions contained in the city's business license by law one eighty-seven dash two thousand and four and policy P dot three dot three. And that the outdoor café licenses for the 2020 patio season be waived and any fees paid for the outdoor café patio license for 2020 be refunded. With regard to that, the other item that is not in the report that should be considered that if you are going to have an outdoor patio, you forego your two free parking spaces for your curbside pickup so that you are not encroaching on additional parking spaces. We'll add that in. And that the summer Stratford Summer Music Barge be approved to operate along the Avon River for the weekend performances, July twenty-four, 2020, and July, or sorry, August twenty-three, 2020. And that a temporary use bylaw expiring on January first, 2021 be brought to council allowing the patio extensions and boardwalk installations. Or alternatively, that city enter into license agreements allowing the business owners to use the portion of the city property for the purposes of the patio extension. And that the city proceed with option one and take responsibility for the installation, maintenance, repair, dismantling and storage of the boardwalk installations. Or alternatively, choose option two and require each business owner to be responsible for the installation, maintenance, repair, dismantling, storage of the boardwalk installation with city inspection and enforcement. And that the street-side live program be approved to operate in designated parking spaces between, in downtown for daily performances between August twenty-fourth, 2020 and August thirty-first, 2020. Councillor Gaffney?
I will make the motion for the whole recommendation except that last piece.
Okay. And what option would you choose? Option one, that the city take responsibility, or option two, that the owner take responsibility?
Option one, your worship.
Thank you. So we'll separate then your requests. Is there a seconder to do that? Councillor Henderson? I'll just say, and I see councillor Ingram, I do know members of council have raised this concern with regard to communication. And as you can imagine, with a task force of over fifty members, making up a wide variety of organizations and groups, some people get excited about these items and happily tell their members and of course broader community about these. And I know that members of council often get to this point to make a decision and it's already been communicated in some, some public spaces. And that is been brought to the attention of the task force and are gonna work with all their partners to ensure that the communication come at once, it is approved by council. And I just say that so that there is an understanding that it is recognized as a, as a challenge. And I hope you can appreciate that trying to contain enthusiasm is tough sometimes, but it is noted for those concerns. Councillor Ingram, councillor Henderson, councillor Vasilakos? Councillor Burbach?
Thank you. I'm, I'd like to speak to this after I hear from some other members of council, but I'd actually like us to take each piece individually. So if we can deal with the patio spaces altogether, the Stratford Summer Music Barge separately and then the street-side live program separately, please.
And at your request, I will note that we'll start with the patios and we will separate them as such. It will still be moved by councillor Gaffney and councillor Henderson for those two items that had previously been moved and the clerk has noted that. Councillor Henderson?
Yes, I just had someone ask me, so the patio, the idea of the boardwalk is a great idea because, you know, it makes it safer for people getting down the street and it gives more room for social distancing. So somebody in a wheelchair asked me, if they go out into that walkway, which is only six and a half feet wide and there's like a little planter there and their wheelchair is sometimes thirty inches wide, how do they social distancing as they're driving by the people on the patio? Because they're supposed to be six feet away.
Councillor Henderson, they'll follow the same thing they do in crossing the Waterloo Street or the William Hut Bridge, the Festival Bridge, the Delamere Street Bridge, where we've put signs up asking people to allow the other person to cross through before entering the pathway. And we've done that on a number of other bridges in the city to date.
They mean, when they're on there and somebody's on a patio, how are they social distancing from them? Because they're sitting at a table eating or drinking?
Those are design pieces that can be taken back. They could put Lexan in place. They could do any number of things. Councillor Vasilakos?
So my question, I actually very much prefer the Toronto system where they're allowing the patios to go in the parking spots. And you can do like, there are pocket patios or, or pop-up patios that are, you know, they get used. Or where you can create patio space on the parking spots, New York City and Toronto are going that approach. And what that allows is, is the pedestrians to go still along the pathway and it's linear. So people can see each other. The thing about the bridges is you can see who's on the other side and you can see who's currently on the bridge. If the patios get busy or if there's staff on them or if the tables aren't placed necessarily at the right spot, somebody could be out and walking on that boardwalk and somebody else could meet them and then somebody has to go backwards. And I can foresee where, if it's, if it's a bit of a pain for pedestrians to be constantly going out and back in and out and back in, it could impact the foot traffic for some of the other retail businesses along the stretch if we get too many of these bypasses. Whereas the linear one, you can go straight through and it's, it's a little cleaner for the pedestrians and for traffic. And as noted in the report, there is an exception that the AGCO has for staff to take alcohol across these, across the pedestrian portion of this. So I did send to staff a very nice colorful version of what Toronto's doing and I quite prefer that. I also prefer it because it, it technically gives more square footage for, without the angles, for social distancing in tables. So I'm not opposed to extension of patios, but I would like a consideration that the, the businesses that want to extend their patios, extend the patio portion into the sidewalk. The other concern I have with all this is we're accumulating stuff for the city. So we have, I don't mind the CRP tables, but we keep, the task force comes to us with stuff. So if we end up having to deal with these boardwalks, well, what if the AGCO decides they're not going to actually support the continued extension of patios in the next year? And now we have to store this stuff and then we have to repair this stuff and we have to clean the wood or, like, it just seems to me at some point we're going to have to say less stuff, more programming or more supports or more things for businesses that doesn't involve then yet more staff time and more coordination and things like that. It, it, it will start to get again complicated. So those are my concerns about approving the current orientation of the pocket patios. And I would agree with, with Jesse Bouterry that we need more simpler, flexible, more nimble approaches. This may not be it. And then who, it's a bit tongue-tumey, but who gets first? Who gets theirs first? Who gets the first free build from the Builders Association? Who gets left to the end? There's a bit of issue about, you know, treating businesses equally. So those are just my thoughts.
And they're all first-world problems. Because if, if none of them are in business next year, you'd be happy to have a bunch of wooden boardwalks sitting in storage somewhere, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
All right. Councillor Burbach and then councillor Sebent, then I'll ask Ms. Gerber to offer some comment.
Okay, thank you. I agree with councillor Vasilakos. I like the idea of keeping the sidewalk somewhat consistent and then putting the patio spaces out into the parking spots. So my question is actually for Mr. D'Lovic. Based on what Ms. Bouterry was talking about, is there a reason that we need to have those, the sort of wooden decks put in place or like, is it a safety concern? Or is there some sort of policy that says that we need to level out the sidewalk with those parking patio spaces?
Through your worship, you know, they've been around for a while. I was familiar with it in the previous community I worked at. And, and part of it was just the way the liquor laws were, where you had to be continuous to the building for the patio. So therefore, if you wanted a larger sidewalk patio, you had to be continuous out. So therefore, you would then reroute your sidewalk out onto the parking spots. So, so the big issue is about the liquor license. And, you know, I've heard now that they've modified it for this year where you, the servers now can cross over the sidewalk to this other area. So directly, you wouldn't need those, wouldn't need that. The only issue I see is if that's your only patio is in that parking spot, you may, for access, you may have to construct a ramp for those people that have mobility issues rather than stepping down, up off the curb down into the patio area. Because there are some areas where we have restaurants, there may not be enough room for them to accommodate a patio on the sidewalk, maintain the space that we need for the free flow pedestrians and then get on to the, to the parking spots that you want to take up. So that, that's really where it came through from my recollection of constructing those boardwalks because of the liquor laws of the time and, and what they were just a few months ago here in the province.
Right, thank you. So I would, I would like to support having these patios or decks, but I would like us to look at maintaining at least a certain width of the sidewalk space. I mean, I, I know that, like on Wellington Street, our sidewalk is quite wide. So maybe a little piece of that sidewalk could be contained within a patio space. But I would just like us to look at some more options as far as what the layout would be. Because I don't really like the boardwalk where people are forced to make all kinds of turns and corners and have sightline issues. Thanks.
I believe councillor Clifford then Bunting, then councillor Henderson and Ingram.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, are there any extra liability on behalf of the city as far as insurance? Either if we have a boardwalk or if they're out after the curb? So it's, is, has our insurance company been advised and information from them?
Ms. Gerber or Mr. D'Lovic?
Through your worship, it's myself. We're liable anyway, even with the, you know, we allow sidewalk patios. I mean, we do require those operators to have additional insurance to name us as an insured. So whether it's on the sidewalk or on the roadway, it's the same liability for the city, even with the boardwalk. At the end of the day, if something happens to someone, they will definitely sue the city and they will do, sue the operator as well. And then that'll be handled by the insurers to, to deal with that for both the operator and for the city.
Ms. Gerber, do you have anything you want to add?
I just agree with Mr. D'Lovic and also to note that both the city's insurer and legal have been advised and been weighing in on the project. and been weighing in on the project thus far.
Mr. Bunting.
Thank you. My thoughts on, on the subject are we need to do something for sure. And we have to do it fast. And this seems to have worked in other locations. The one thing I would say certainly with regards to, say, for instance, Ontario Street, which has got a number of facilities that would be looking to extend their patio. I'm not so sure that, although I see some benefits to Ms. Votary's theory about making the other part of the patio on the parking and in the parking spaces. I'm not so sure that many people would want to sit and have a tractor trailer going past them like within inches while they're having their meal. So that's a downside to not have, not having the current sidewalk used for the purposes of a patio. Thank you.
Counselor Henderson, Ingram, Seven.
Well, I had a couple of questions. So some businesses like, for instance, Features, they're on a corner. Will you be allowed to have a front and a side patio? Like, I know they were trying to set it up and they didn't have enough width on the ones on the side of Waterloo Street side. And my other part is, I personally like the option how it's presented to us. Because in the option that Kathy's talking about, so now the patios are going to have to build their space on the road up to have it on the road because it's got to be level for anybody in a wheelchair to be able to get into it. And now the servers have to cross the sidewalk with their food and drink and there'll be people coming along. I prefer, I prefer, like, you know, I like both ideas, but I think the one where it shows going out and around is a better one. Plus, it's actually probably easier for people with walkers and canes and wheelchairs. Because now you don't have, when you're right beside the patio on the sidewalk, now you have to worry about watching for bike racks and telephone poles and benches and garbage cans and things like that. It's, to me, it's smoother and more open and cleaner. And as, I forget who just said it, was it Counselor Clifford or Gaffney? About the transport trucks going by when you're eating or cars in general. Where somebody that's just walking to you, they're just walking to you quickly. It actually, I like the option that's presented, actually, sorry.
Ms. Gerber, can you talk to the overall, you know, restaurants and strategy and such?
Sure, thank you. Through your worship. So we, we were approached with this idea about a little, little less than three weeks ago. And we moved it through the Destination Development Group, which looks at different events that the task force has been asked to review. And then again, through for process, moved it through the city initiatives team. And here it is for you now as council to consider a couple of things. And I apologize if I've not captured everyone's questions, but I will do my best. In terms of the design, this was a design that was quite common in, in many municipalities. And echoing Mr. D'Lovic's comments that it was designed with the current and what we, or at the time, and what we believe our future liquor license bylaws to be. Right now, of course, they've created an awful lot of flexibility and I give them great credit for that. However, we actually see this project as something that our businesses can use in future years. And if AGCO licensing goes back to requiring a contiguous patio with fencing, similar to what you see last summer, then these boardwalks would be essentially, or the, sorry, the pop-up patios design would be essentially unusable. So this design does have a longer term opportunity. In terms of speed, and if I could just take a second, if you don't know Ms. Volteri, she's a female entrepreneurs for businesses in the city, so she gets all the time from me that she asks for. And I appreciate you giving her time today. We have the Stratford Area Builders Association ready to go as soon as we have direction from council. So the first, the first prototype will be built tomorrow. They expect they'll get at least four or five more done by the end of the week. And in terms of whether, of making sure that it's equitable for our business owners, we expect that the 11 whom, whom have expressed an interest should have them installed within the next 10 days. So we can turn, we're turning these around pretty quickly. SABHA has come to the table to offset all of the coordination costs. MTE has done the drawings at a very reduced rate. And many of the SABHA members that are suppliers are providing that, the wood and the kits, they're called, at a very reduced rate as well. If I've missed any other questions, your worship, please let me know.
Next I have Counselor Ingram, Seven, Ritzma, Burbak, and Gaffney, Vazalakos.
Thank you, because this is a great segue from Ms. Gerber's comments. My concern was with the long-term potential of the use of these boardwalk pieces. We as council have dealt with parking in the core over and over and over again. And I would not want to see in future years where we are back to our tourism capacity that we are taking up parking spaces for these boardwalk pieces. Parking is always at a premium. We also need the revenue as a city. And so having the future potential use of these and, and having them become so ingrained that people automatically expect them is, is a big concern for me. And I think it would be in the future for the BIA as well. In terms of the project, I love the idea. I, I also agree with what Toronto and New York City, even Waterloo region, they're all moving to having these patio spaces within the parking spaces on the roadway or in parking lots. If they're, if they have a parking lot adjacent to their restaurant, they're extending patio spaces into parking lots and, and parking spaces on the roadway. And I think that's a much more simplistic, easy, nimble, adaptable way to move this project forward.
Thank you. Counselor Seven, then Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. I just had a question about the, yeah, the assembly. I'm just reading the report. It says in partnership with the Stratford Area Builders Association, the boardwalks will be assembled at no cost. I just wanted some explanation around that. Is that because we're buying the materials from them? Or what is the partnership exactly?
If I might, sorry, through your worship, Counselor Seven. So the Stratford Area Builders Association wanted to get involved in some tourism recovery, some task force initiatives. We proposed this project to them. They are going to coordinate on their own dime, if you will. So their team will be the, the project coordinator and they will use their own membership budget for that. There will not be any cost for that. In terms of the contractors, they're going to ask the contractors to get, provide or gift their time, donate their time. They expect a couple hours per contract or per build. And so they don't expect any cost in terms of the, the construction costs. And then the, any costs from the, the materials. We've created a project so that our Fed Dev funding would be able to, to pay for that. And just one point of reference through your worship for Counselor Ingram. I wouldn't expect you'd ever give free parking spaces in the future for these things. As we get back to, as you point out, a very new normal or whatever that shall be. We would fully expect that not only would restaurants pay their patio fees, which would include the extension. So there would be additional revenues because your patio applications are per square foot. But that also, it would be no different than if you were paying for a meter hood. So the businesses would be required to offset the cost of the, the revenue that that parking would generate.
Thank you. If I could just, I, I mean, I, that's, that's very generous of them. And I think that's, that's very great. It's just, I just find it, that's, that's a very significant contribution to the city, especially during the busy summer months. So I guess we all owe a big thank you for doing that.
And it is, it is a very generous donation. I, to say that we've had a lot of people, like over 50 volunteers have stepped forward to the committee. A lot of organizations are stepping forward. We haven't had to go out, you probably shouldn't have to at times like this to drag people in. It's nice that the Builders Association came, came to the table and actually they have their president sitting on one of the recovery task forces as well. I have Counselor Burbak, Counselor Ritzma, Counselor Gaffney, Counselor Vazalakos, and Counselor Henderson. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a quick question. In one of the reports, it says that 11 businesses are interested. The other report said 13. What about the businesses that maybe fell through the cracks that were not approached? Because I was, there was a business owner that I talked to who said they had not heard of it. And why had they not been asked? So I'm just wondering if, you know, do we have a capacity to expand it to those businesses that may have been missed with the first round of consultation?
So through your worship, 13 initially expressed interest. They were, they were multi-owners. So they were one owner that had multi-properities and so the, the number is 11. We use the business improvement, the city center committee as contact database with which to reach out. So I apologize to the business owner that didn't receive that. But we, we thought we had picked as best as possible the, the mode of communication to get that request out. And there is a possibility, of course, for those businesses who see the program and, and see its benefit to, to request a boardwalk as well. We have, we would have the capacity, I think, to go up to 20. But I mean, we can come back to you if we see that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ritzma, Gaffney, Vazalakos, Henderson.
Thank you, your worship. And certainly I want to echo as we look forward to the 2021 season. And hopefully things returning to as close normal as possible. You know, especially in, including our tourism. A big part of that is the restaurant industry. And to have as many of those restaurants survive this summer, which is going to be a difficult summer. I see this as a, an opportunity to, to keep some more business in, in our restaurants in Stratford. And the other point that was, you know, this project, I think will do that. The other piece that was pointed out by several, several of our counselors and you yourself, your worship, was the great partnerships that were here at the table, from the committee members to MTE to SABHA, the city, all coming together during these times. So I certainly support that, the motion that's on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to, and this sort of goes along with what Counselor Ingram was asking. Has there been any feedback from any, any of the store owners downtown to losing the amount of parking spots that are being lost to this initiative? Is that, have they shown some concern about that?
Most of the parking spots that have been lost for the curbside pickup are just going to be replaced with the boardwalk patio. So it's not a, a large expansion beyond what's already been lost. And, and of course, again, the city center has, has communicated some of these items. There are business owners in the downtown that are in retail and the service sector that are not overly happy to have parking spaces lost. And that is why it's, it's a delicate balance of trying to stimulate both groups here.
And to follow up, I, I, and thank you. And to follow up, I, I think we should be careful what sort of commitments we're making in the future. This is a program that's designed to be a one-off. So let's not make promises we may not be able to keep for 2021 and beyond. Thank you.
Counselor Vazalakos.
So I'm, I'm wondering if there is a, the potential to do a hybrid of the current boardwalk. The thing is, I, you know, if somebody really wants to do the boardwalk and wants to extend their patio, maybe we can make some concessions for it. But I really don't want to end up with 20 or 30 of these and then actually be, again, I'm one of the people who flagged the communications around this and being unhappy with what now feels like council being perfunctory. And we're going to rubber stamp something because it's already out there and everyone is all ready to go. Without having a chance to have a conversation around the potential pitfalls of it. The other thing is there may be some restaurants downtown that aren't interested in this as a long-term solution. They may be like Ms. Volteri, looking for the option to put up some sort of concrete barriers. You know, put some plants on top, expand their patio space this year, but aren't really looking for a long-term patio expansion. And so we should be offering and then allowing that sidewalk space. Like if they have adjacent, maybe they want to be good neighbors and they have adjacent retail businesses that really aren't that happy with the idea of diverting pedestrians. And they may want to look at just using the spots for extended patio into the parking. So we, is there any reason why we can't approve either option? And, and give businesses the, the, the flexibility to do what suits for them? And to also allow some feedback from adjacent retail businesses?
Well, what would be good is if you're interested in that is to refer it to the city's initiatives team to go through a process to look at it like they would have done with the boardwalks. So that it goes through the same lens of what's the accessibility, what's the access, how's it going to work? All those things. That way every, every idea comes through the same piece.
I guess, I guess it would have been ideal to have, have those two, like have options before us today. Ideally, I think.
Actually, it would have been ideal if somebody had suggested that through the recovery task force. And it could have been observed at the same time, but it wasn't a submitted idea. Counselor Henderson, then Counselor Gaffney.
Jody, maybe you could answer, like if you have a store like Features, for instance. So they're on Ontario and Waterloo. I'm assuming it will, each restaurant will only be allowed two spots. And you're saying there was 11 that have, there were 13, but 11 ones, right? So have all 11 of them, are they currently using the meter hoods too? Or how many meter hoods are actually out?
Mr. Fo, if you allow me to ask the clerk if she has a record of that.
Sure.
Currently, there are more than 11 hoods out and each hood represents two parking spaces. So we already have more than that reserved for curbside pickup. Counselor Ingram, and then Counselor Gaffney.
So if I may, I'm going to apologize for being the one to put this out there. But I am going to, to request that we refer this to the city's initiative team. Only because I think a number of times, a couple of us have asked about, you know, what was happening with the patio space? And if we were going to be expanding. And we were told that the recovery task force was working on it, but we weren't given much more detail than that. That it was being worked on, it's being talked about and people were, were coming forward with ideas. But I think what many of us are looking for is, is options. And so I know this puts a little bit of a delay on it. But we did talk about having a special meeting to deal with the operations of the lines pool. So perhaps this idea could also be piggybacked onto that special meeting and we could deal with it then.
Sure. Counselor Gaffney, and then we'll, we can look at a referral. And Counselor Beating.
Thank you, your worship. Just in response, and I ask Ms. Gerber to correct me if I'm wrong here. But in response to what Kath, sorry, Counselor Kathy was asking a few moments ago, whether the patios, the boardwalks we're going to install become part of the pedestrian corridor, corridor? Or could they, if, if we change the full and leave, to leave pedestrians on the sidewalk, those boardwalks could just as easily become that patio extension? So you just shift in the, the, the tables and chairs onto the patio to open the sidewalk up? If we go, you know, if we decide to go that way.
So through your worship, we, we will take this back to MTE to have them review the, the engineered drawings and then resubmit them based on a different design. I'm not an engineer or a contractor, so I can't speak to how easy or, or not that would be. But we would certainly want MTE to take around at a series of drawings that would represent the, the second pop-up patio option.
Counselor Beating, then Counselor Clifford.
Thank you, your worship. Just an opinion here, we, we need to be nimble. Time is of the essence. And Time is of the essence and I will be honest, I don't think there's a perfect solution for this. But we have an option that's been given to us, that has been brought forward by staff, that has been given many hours through volunteers and recommendations and organizations that are willing to give of their time. I don't see the, the value of taking even more time on this. I think we need to just take the staff recommendation as proposed and and move forward.
Counselor Clifford.
I, I agree with Counselor Peedy. If, if an establishment does not want the boardwalk and they want to come back with some other idea after, but I think time is of essence. I mean, we're, we'll be in the July very quickly and as you get into September or in October, it's not the time. So I think we should go ahead with the people that want it. We have the elders association that want to help us. So I don't support a slowing this down right now.
Counselor Seven.
I know we split up the motions. I just wanted before it comes to a vote, what motion is on the floor, if I could say?
It is that the, the split on this motion is that permit extension of patios over the sidewalk space adjacent to a restaurant building and the installation of a boardwalk, a wooden causeway over municipal parking spots for the 2020 patio season till November first, 2020. That applicants be required to submit all necessary paperwork and drawings to the clerk's office, enter into an outdoor patio agreement with the city and comply with the provisions contained in the city's business license bylaw one eighty-seven dash two thousand and four and policy P dot three dot three. And the outdoor cafe patio license for 2020 season be waived and that any fees previously paid for outdoor patio license for the 2020 season be refunded. And that the temporary use bylaw expiring on January first, 2021 be brought to council allowing for the patio, patio extensions and boardwalk installations. Or alternatively, that city enter a license agreements allowing the owner to use the portion of the city property for the purposes. And then anyone utilizing the boardwalk not be permitted to spaces for curbside pickup. And I'll just ask Ms. Thompson. Okay. Okay. And that the option one be noted as well. And we are actually going to strike the temporary use bylaw, that paragraph.
Okay, thank you. And then, so I just had a question then about the license fees. Is this going to be, how will this apply if somebody applies for a license after this passes?
After this sea, this season, they would basically be licensed free. Next year, it'd be at the decision of council.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Vazalakos, then I'll go to Counselor Ingram.
Just really quickly, um, I, I know that there may be a referral motion coming, but I would very much like to take that outdoor patio license fees out of anything that is referred. I think we could decide today to provide some financial relief to businesses that are, have currently have patios. I don't know that it belongs in, in, in the discussion around extension of patios. I think it's a standalone item on its own.
So you'll ask for the, the fee portion to be split?
Yes, please.
If the referral does not go through?
Yes, please.
Okay. Counselor Seven.
All right. I also want to add, I do agree with Counselor Beatty and Clifford. I think, you know, if they're saying, if things are ready and some businesses will have this option, you know, before the weekend. I, I can't imagine the revenue is very small or what would be missed even if another, a few days go by, so they miss another weekend. So I just wanted to add those thoughts.
Thank you. Counselor Ingram, you wanted to request a referral?
Yes, I think the, the direction coming back to us for lines pool was that we could have a special meeting before the end of the week. So if we could refer this item to the city's initiative team to come up, come back with some options, then perhaps we could deal with this before the end of the week as well.
You're making a referral. Is there a second or? Counselor Burbak, all those in favor of the referral motion? Three, those opposed? And that's carried, or sorry, defeated, I'm sorry, referrals defeated. Counselor Henderson, did you have something you wanted to add before I call a question?
Well, I just wanted, wanted to say that we just heard that Saba is ready to start building tomorrow. So if we refer this to Friday, that's probably five or six patios they wouldn't have had built. I think the faster we win this, the better. Let's get our downtown thriving.
Counselor Ingram.
Part of that, that referral and asking for options was that we wouldn't have necessarily have the boardwalks. We might just have them using the parking spaces. They, we might just have them, you know, having a, a space for accessible at tables and then, you know, it, it might not be necessary.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Gaffney and seconded by Counselor Henderson. All those in favor? Opposed? And that motion carries. The second item then is with regards to the Stratford Summer Music Barge be approved to operate along the Avalon River for weekend performances between July twenty-fourth and August twenty-third, 2020. And that was moved by Counselor Gaffney and Henderson. Counselor? Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. I guess my, through you, my question is to the Director of Infrastructure, I'm guessing the barge is in ship shape and ready to go.
Through your worship, yeah, there may be some minor works that we do every year, but we did some major repairs to it a few years ago. So it'll just be a minor getting it ready to put into the water.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed, Fenny, that's carried. Last item is the street side live program be approved to operate designated parking spaces uptown for daily performances between August twenty-fourth and August thirty-first, 2020. I need a move and a second. Counselor Bunty and Counselor Burbak, discussion. Counselor Henderson, Counselor Ingram, Counselor Clifford.
I don't understand this one. How are they going to maintain social distancing if they're having it in one location, just sitting there? And limit it to what, groups of ten?
Ms. Gerber?
Thank you, through your worship. So the budget for the street side live project includes ambassadors, which will be paid for by the organizers to ensure that individuals on the sidewalks across the streets are maintaining social distancing. So the, the six feet apart, these will not always be in the same spot. So they will move throughout that week of programming so that, you know, individuals on Ontario Street may, may enjoy them, then Wellington Street and so on and so forth. So there is a plan in place to ensure people stay as separate as they can. And they will be safely musicking themselves in the backs of these trucks in groups of less than ten, of course.
Counselor Ingram.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. Just answer my question.
Counselor Clifford.
I apologize. I don't have the report in front of me right now, but, but how much is, is the cost and who pays for it?
Ms. Gerber?
Through your worship, thank you. So the overall budget for this project is just about, just over forty-four thousand dollars. The organizers will fundraise fifty percent of it. They have almost all of that complete. And fifty percent has been deemed an eligible tourism recovery project. So Fed Dev Ontario will pay for those costs.
Counselor Henderson.
So when they set up, they're going to be, we just approved doing the patio. So that's probably around twenty-two parking spots left that'll be in the city. So now we'll be approving two more parking spots that will be tied up. And are they going to be together or are they going to be operating ones on Ontario, ones at Waterloo? Are they operating together, side by side?
Through, through your worship, so they are two parking spaces and the trucks will be, they'll operate together. So it won't be, my understanding is it won't be one over here and one over there. They will only require that parking spot for the duration of their performance. So they will work with our event management team and the city and, it's the City of Stratford Clerk's Office to reserve a meter hood and and pay for any fees attached to that, which we would, which would otherwise be eligible for that day of their performances, which there, I think there are three performances per day. The next day, they would move on to a different space and so on and so forth.
Counselor Burbak.
So just to clarify, you would be strategically placing these probably close to patios and places where people would be so already socially distanced, but sitting there and being able to enjoy the music as opposed to, you know, people walking down the street. So you, yeah, the placement of them would be in adjacent to Market Square and other places with patio options.
Yes, that's correct. You know, we want to make sure they're, they're placed in, in, in areas where as many people as possible can enjoy them. And of course, the open areas that exist already are are prime for that. So yes.
Right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there anything further? All those in favor? Opposed, if any. One opposed and that carries. There is no business for which previous notice has been given under section eight. The Standing Committee report of the Planning and Heritage Committee is that the Zone Change Application Z zero five dash nineteen, a portion of two sixty-five St. David Street and Zone Change Application Z zero seven dash nineteen, one twenty-two Birmingham and a portion of two sixty-five St. David Street. And the following, the recommendation is that zoning of the east portion of the property, municipally known as two sixty-five St. David Street, legally described as lot one and parts lot two, thirteen and fourteen, Plan eighty-four be changed from a residential fifth density R one three twenty-seven zone to a residential fifth density R five one twenty-one H special provision zone, which restricts uses to the existing building with an addition of not more than ten percent. Permits a maximum of density of thirty-two units per hectare allows us exterior side yard depth for a parking space of two point seven meters and our rear, rear yard depth of a parking space of one point five meters for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the provincial policy statement. The request is in conformity with the goals, objectives and policies of the official plan. The zone change provide for development that is appropriate for the lands and the public input has been considered. That the zoning for the lands municipally known as one twenty-two Birmingham Street in the west portion of the property municipally known as two sixty-five St. David be changed from a residential first density R one, R twenty, R one three twenty-seven zone to residential first density R one three forty-four H zone for the following reasons. Consistent with provincial policy statement, the rest, the request is in conforming with the goals, objectives and policies of the official plan. And that the zone change be provided for development that is appropriate for the lands and the public input has been considered. And that the holding provision be applied for the consent to be finalized and the heritage designation to be in place. And the council received the supplemental information included in the management report dated March ninth, 2020. Counselor Ingram will move his chair, seconded by Counselor Burbak, discussion. Counselor Clifford.
Is there a timeline on the holding provision? Is it, is there a time, like the end of December or what, what's happening with that?
Mr. Delovick.
Through the chair, I will have to get back to you on and provide that information as to what the timeline will be.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed, if any. One opposed and that's carried. There is no notice of intent for which previous notice has been given. The reading of the bylaws. There are nine bylaws that can be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. Eleven one is the private tree preservation bylaw. Eleven two appoints parks and forestry staff to enforce private tree preservation bylaw, park patrollers and to make housekeeping amendments. Item three is acceptance of the proposal for the Huron Street Reconstruction Project. Eleven four is the agreement with Upper Thames Riser Conservation Authority with regard the R Thomas Orr Dam, the John Street Weir and the Avon River Flood Control. Eleven five is the award for accessible bus shelters. Eleven six is the acquisition of property by Huron Public Health. Eleven seven is the delegation of authority to sign memorandums of understanding with licensed childcare operators. Eleven eight is a zoning bylaw Z zero five dash nineteen with regard to two sixty-five St. David. And eleven nine is zoning bylaw Z zero seven dash nineteen, as it relates to one twenty-two Birmingham and the side lot portion of two sixty-five St. David. And they can be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. Moved by Counselor Ingram and seconded by Counselor Bunty. Although, Counselor Gaffney?
I'd like to take eleven point one separately, please.
Okay. So we'll take bylaws eleven, two through nine collectively. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. So we'll go to first and second reading of bylaws eleven, two through nine. Moved by Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Burbak, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, Fenny, and that's carried. Third and final reading is Counselor Seven and Counselor Beatty moving bylaws eleven, two through eleven, nine, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, Fenny, and that's carried. Bylaw eleven, one can be read a first and second time, a mover. Counselor Burbak and Counselor Vazalakos, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Opposed. Counselor Gaffney is opposed. All is, that's carried. Third and final reading of bylaw eleven, one. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Henderson, discussion. Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I'm not sure if this would be a question for which director, which, which staff member, when does this bylaw come into force and effect?
On final passage.
Well, so tomorrow morning, we're going to start measuring trees.
Mr. Foe said that as of tomorrow, people can start to, to submit applications for permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further, all those in favor? Opposed, Fenny? One opposed and that's noted. Thank you. Item twelve is the consent agenda. There's five items listed. Is there anyone wishing to bring anything forward? Seeing none, we'll go to new business and I just have one and I see Counselor Henderson. In follow up to Counselor Burbak's request at the last meeting for Community Equity Action Team, it has been being worked on by the CAO in conjunction with the police chief. They're looking at the appropriateness of whether the Community Safety and Wellbeing Committee is the right place. They will be bringing back a recommendation within the next few weeks of where it should go, who should it be comprised of and who will be responsible for it, for council's consideration information. And that we are looking at other communities to look to see what they have done to mirror some of that. So it is in the works and will be forthcoming for council shortly. I had new business. I had Counselor Henderson, Seven, Ritzma, Beatty, Vazalakos.
Yes, I just wanted to bring up, I think we've had an email. I've seen a couple of comments about picking up garbage along the river on the weekend. Is there a possibility that somebody could go out even once a day? Because I saw it myself, like it was fine on Friday night, but Saturday it was sort of a disaster. Now, I don't know. I think it's because more people aren't able to eat in restaurants. So they're maybe going and getting takeout from the local restaurants and then they're going down along the river and enjoying a nice meal by the river and then putting leftover garbage. Is it a possibility to add that? Is there any staff to do that?
Mr. St. Louis.
Through you, your worship. Yes, it is a possibility to do weekend garbage, but it'll be at an overtime rate.
Thank you. And that will be similar to other years when you've done that, correct?
It is. We've done Sunday garbage in past years, but it was a bigger, bigger run where we did the parks and not only the river.
Thank you. Counselor Seven, Ritzma, Beatty, Vazalakos, Gaffney.
May I speak to that last comment though, before we move on?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, just wondering, is there a possibility of adding more gar, if, instead of paying overtime, adding more garbage? adding more garbage cans that that'd be available and then pick them up on Monday as as per normal without the overtime?
Mr. St. Louis.
That was our plan this week to get more garbage cans out. I'm not sure. It was our plan last week, so I'm not sure if they might have. So we can certainly do that.
Thank you. Anything else on that? I have Counselor Ritzma, M. B. D. Vazalacos, Gaffney, Burbak, Clifford.
Can I ask you a follow-up on that?
Sure.
Um, well, why don't we try that this weekend to put out an extra, say, garbage can beside the other garbage can? And then when staff goes to collect it on Monday, they'll know if it works.
Yeah, I had my hand up for a follow-up on that as well. I just, I would suggest that maybe we should be adding recycle bins because a lot of the stuff ending up in the garbage is actually recyclable materials. So I'd like to see additional recycling added, please.
Mr. St. Louis, can you take those ideas back for consideration?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely.
Thank you. Anything following up on that before we go to the next one? Counselor Bunting.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Okay, I'm just for Mr. St. Louis's information, there's about 50 garbage cans up at the Festival Hydro Community Park and that probably most of them won't be needed this year due to the cancellation of soccer.
Thank you. Is there anything further on that item? Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I'd like to say that obviously our plan is working. Counselor Henderson, if we got more people going down to the park and buying buying at our local restaurants, go down to the park. Good problem to have. Thank you.
All right, anything further on that item? Before I turn it over to Counselor Seven, I just want to have Counselor Ritzma following him, Counselor Beatty, Counselor Vazalacos, Gaffney, Clifford. Is there anyone I'm missing? All right, we'll do it in that order, Counselor Seven.
Thank you. I just wanted to note a couple of things. I'm just pleased to see that the report that the transit shelters will be, the rest will be opening up in coming weeks. So that's, that's good to see somewhat return to normalcy for for something else. And I just wanted to ask about if there are any possibility of adding more shade, like umbrellas or anything at the splash pad? And I was going by there and I noticed there's only a couple of tables that are in the shade and I just wondered if we had any, any options for that?
Mr. St. Louis or Mr. Herndon, if you're on the line still?
It's the, Mr. David, certainly a possibility to add more shade. It's, it's difficult to buy something that's durable for the wind, but we can certainly take a look.
Thank you. Counselor Ritzma.
Thank you, your worship. A question and it's directed towards Mr. Delovick. He and I have had conversations on this and I'm just wondering about the the Redford Crescent Rest Reconstruction and the replacement of driveways. I know our policy in the past was to replace the driveway with the same consistency across all driveways, but I've been contacted by one homeowner that has stamped concrete, a beautiful driveway that's relatively new. It will be cut in half and I believe he's been informed that it wouldn't be replaced. So he would have half color concrete and half regular. So I'm just wondering whether through you, your worship, whether we could have conversation about that or if if Mr. Delovick have had further conversation with the residents with regards to that concern?
Mr. Delovick.
Yeah, through your worship up, I think it best if we have a motion to bring back, for staff to bring back a report on it and we, back to this one, it'll be several months before we do the restoration. So we do have time on it and we can talk about what we do historically, what the additional costs are. And then have a fulsome discussion.
Thanks.
A follow-up to that, if I may, sir. So then I would like to refer back to staff to 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 look into the situation and and bring it back to council for, as you've identified the director, a more fulsome conversation with these individual situations.
Second, or Counselor Seven? All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Counselor Beatty.
Thank you, your worship. Over the last couple of years, I've had the opportunity to speak with several individuals about their desire for an outdoor basketball court in Stratford. Most recently, I was approached by Bruce Whitaker, who people might know as one of the community members that brought the skate park to Stratford. And we were chatting about the desire for an outdoor basketball court. And he shared with me that there was desire within the community for such a project. And consequently, we had some early conversations about what it could potentially look like. And so today I'd like to bring forward to council a proposal. And that being that in looking at different locations throughout the community, a desire was to look at the unutilized location of the old skate park and what it would take to make that space a great spot for kids of all ages to to play some basketball. And the the suggestion was is that it would simply be, you know, make this place a workable space by refurbishing the the existing asphalt and putting up a couple of basketball hoops and simple and easy, but we could potentially look at having this project done very easily at no cost to the city for the installation. Mr. Whitaker brought forward the that the there is funding being brought forward by the Stratford Basketball Association and the Festival City Rotary, as well as a private donation by himself to make this a possibility for our community. So again, the thought of of having a new outdoor basketball court located close to YMCA. Just early conversation with staff and and other with the YMCA has been that it's quite feasible, being that it's no cost to to move forward with this, but wanting to bring this forward to council to basically, I'm seeking consideration to permit this project to move forward with 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 staff oversight. And I just wanted to bring that up.
Like to refer to staff?
I, if if that's what need be, or if this is something that if we could just move forward with this project with the fact of staff oversight.
I think a referral, Counselor Henderson?
No.
Oh, you want to approve it?
Yeah.
Counselor, okay, Counselor Beatty, you're moving it that it go forward?
Yes.
Okay, and Counselor Henderson is going to second that discussion on that item. Counselor Clifford, Ritzma, Seven, Gaffney.
I was just going to ask, with the expansion of the hub, if we get our help from the province, would it be in, would that project, would it be in the way of the of the hub, we're planning for the hub?
Well, I don't, I don't know because staff haven't looked at it for a site plan to to see. Counselor Ritzma, then Seven.
And that was going to be my comment. I'm just wondering whether we refer back to staff so they can look at that because that's one of my concerns that we do establish something there. And I, and I love the idea, Counselor Beatty, but I'm just wondering whether that's going to be short term. And and if we had staff look at it with their suggestions, whether there would be a longer term solution to to the outdoor court.
Counselor Seven, then Counselor Gaffney, then Counselor Burbak and Henderson.
Yeah, thank you. I don't oppose the the concept of a public basketball court. I guess my concerns are, if I remember correctly, at the time with the skate park discussions, there were, there were arguments brought forward about how the location for that, for where a skate park was, was not ideal. I would prefer to take this sort of dial it back a little bit. And if we're going to refer to staff, perhaps refer the idea of an outdoor basketball court and have them find, you know, a few locations that they deem would be appropriate and move forward from there.
Okay, Counselor Gaffney, Counselor Burbak, then Counselor Henderson.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, just to extend what Counselor Seven just said, we just to say, go ahead and do it without getting so staff looking at it and stuff because we, you know, we're not judges of the condition of the place or the viability or or so I'm, I think staff should, we should be asking for a report from staff moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is a great idea. Just, I did talk to Bruce Whitaker about this and he was mentioning that the the post that they put up, the basketball nets would be removable. So they could be moved to a different location later. So that even though the temporary, the location may be temporary for the next few years, the equipment could be transferred to another spot. So just a note.
I have Counselor Henderson. I see Counselor Clifford after that.
The only reason that I seconded Brad's motion was because my understanding was that Bruce had already met with staff. Is it possible staff could comment on whether they see any issues on whether they need to have a referral at this point?
Mr. St. Louis.
Through, Mr. Mayor, yes, we did meet with Bruce Whitaker on site and we don't see any issues with the location other than it may be a way of future developments. But again, as Counselor mentioned, the polls are certainly.
Okay, Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to, we have this parking lot behind my house on Matilda and there's a washroom across from it. I, it would be, and it at one time had basketball nets up. So I think its location has washrooms right handy and it has the asphalt right there. So I think it's a, it's a spot that is, could be an option.
Counselor Henderson, you had something and then Counselor Burbak.
Yes, I talked to Bruce about that, the idea of where there already are basketball courts in the city. And he has met with the youth. He has like a little committee that he meets with them and he went down and talked to them. And they prefer to be in a local place like downtown. They feel more secure and they feel that there's the pickleball courts there. There's the playground. There's the skate park. Across the road, there's the Y. There's the washrooms at the transit or they can go to the Y to the washroom. Well, right now it's closed, but and so to have it right there, it's handy and flexible. So say part of the family wants to roller skate and part wants to play basketball, they can all go down as a family union and it's, you know, and it might be in an area that when we do the construction, it could stay because, you know, I know we're doing a lot of the other part, but you know, I don't know. And you know, the Y is going to eventually move and everything, but it could tend to be a few years before it would have to be moved.
Okay. Counselor Burbak, then Seven, I believe, were the last two hands I saw.
Yeah, my comment was actually the same as Counselor Henderson's. And yeah, I think it's a location wise, it's very central. So people coming from all different neighborhoods would be able to access it a lot easier. So that's a, the centralized location is is really an advantage, I think.
Okay, Counselor Seven.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that I would like to see this referred to staff for for options to come forward. I think I'm a little, I'm quite concerned. I feel like normally someone just would come to a subcommittee meeting and have a presentation formally. I'm a little concerned about the, the abruptness of this being brought and and going ahead without the due process that we normally rely on for for checks and balances. So I would prefer to see staff come back with options for for council to consider.
Okay, Counselor Beatty.
And and I'll just say that this is just, and it's just my opinion, it's a simple project. And as we've learned or as we've shared, it can easily be moved at a later date should it be deemed that it's in a space that is more appropriate for our future development. But when I look at what we need to do to celebrate small wins currently when our youth are, have been looking for anything to to celebrate, this is a project, we could have a paving crew in there very quickly, just to resurface that piece of unutilized asphalt and have some courts put up and kids could be hopefully using that space real very easily with just support of this committee. So again, I'm, I'll leave it at that.
Counselor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. I'm, I personally, I'm not comfortable telling, saying, saying to staff in the community and to each other, let's just go ahead and do this because, you know, we got, we got somebody that wants to buy us a basketball net. I'd like to have staff to go down there and have a look at the land to make sure we we're not facing a whole lot of liability because the asphalt's all breaking apart and it's a no condition for kids to be running on. You know, I think it's a great idea. I'm glad somebody in the community is willing to step up, but let's not go off half-cocked here and gets ourselves in a bunch of trouble if kids start ending up with twisted ankles and stuff. So thank you.
Counselor Henderson, I saw your hand, then Counselor Vazalacos, then Counselor Beatty.
I just wanted to break up. We just heard from David St. Louis that he went with Bruce down and looked at the area, but it sounds like it might not get passed. So maybe what we could do is add to the motion that it would come back with the lines full recommendation. So it'll be done this week. So they can use it this summer.
Counselor Vazalacos.
Yeah, my apologies. I missed part of the conversation because I was cut off. I'm in general, I'm very supportive of this. I think it's a, it's a great idea, but I do also feel a little like I don't have a report in front of me to 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 refer to or to have thought about it. Or, you know, we do have lots of people in the community to play basketball. We have lots of organizations that that are involved with basketball. We haven't actually asked their input as well. I think, you know, it's an easy win, but it could also be, you know, penny wise, pound foolish if we go to the effort of of bringing it up to a certain standard. And then we have, you know, people in the community who would like to make something more permanent or have something, something, you know, more just, as I said, I think it's a great idea. I just would like to get a little bit more information. And because it's the other thing is we build facilities, but then we also don't build in who maintains it, how is it maintained? You know, what does replacement look like? What's the process for thinking about what the permanent, what a permanent solution to this would be? And it would be nice to have some of those details in a staff report before we decide.
Okay, it's been moved. Counselor Ingram, sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't hear from Mr. St. Louis. If any sort of like fencing or barrier be required to stop balls from like going onto sidewalks or going towards the rows or anything like that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we've looked at that and we plan on putting barriers up, but I would not call it fencing, to gather garbage. So we're looking at barriers that would stop the bouncing balls from heading towards the road.
Counselor Beatty, did you have one last thing before I call the question?
Oh, your worship, I'll just leave it. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
So what was moved and seconded? Sorry, I missed it. So I don't want to vote without knowing what's moved.
Moved and seconded that the location of the old skateboard park beside the YMCA be permitted to have installed at the donor's expense a basketball court.
So just if I could follow up, is that donor's expense include any barriers and and pavement improvements that would be required?
Counselor Beatty's?
So it's the resurfacing of of the current asphalt because I know Counselor Gaffney mentioned that there are some cracks in, and that is one reason why they they want to make it nice for for all that use that surface. So it will be a resurfacing of of the existing asphalt and and the two courts. And that would be, there's funding, as I mentioned, from the Stratford Basketball Association who has weighed in on this, as well as the Festival City Rotary Club and then Mr. Whitaker himself.
So, so I'm sorry, because I did miss that. So why don't we have a report then? If all this is, if staff have met, if we've had Sabbath, we've like.
To be honest, it's just very early conversations, Counselor Vazalacos. We, it was nothing formal here. I just said, hey, can you tell me your thoughts? And so that's why I'm bringing it forward today, just to bring it forward to council to see what kind of desire there would be to move forward. So there was no, no formal discussions. It was just early conversations as could this potentially be a site that could work?
So if if I could, if it's very early time, we should probably get a donor's letter from the groups involved so we know who's covering. letter from the groups involved, so we know who's covering the cost, they should probably know exactly what they're doing, and the location should be reviewed to make sure it works. I don't think any of us are against, uh, donations such as this and some type of process around it. So if we could refer it at least to staff to solicit some of those pieces, I think it would be a good idea. I saw Councilor Seven, and then I saw Councilor Henderson on that, so go ahead.
No, I, I guess it was further to that, I just didn't know if, I mean, my question was whether council has the, how can council, how could council inform with the motion without, I mean, we're, we're sort of obligating a group to, to donate without anything in writing, so I think, I think, uh, I was just questioning how we were able to do that.
Okay, Councilor Henderson?
I would ask that, um, Brad maybe would modify the motion a bit to say that council directs staff to, to look, to move forward with this idea and come back with a report, um, along with the Lions' pool report, if possible?
So you'll change the motion, Councilor Beatty, that it be referred to staff to consider the location and bring back a report?
Yes, it will.
And Councilor Henderson will second, then I see Councilor Seven, go ahead, Councilor Seven?
Yeah, I, I just, I'd like to see in the, put in the report, um, options, I mean, look at that option that's been proposed, uh, but then also compare it to alternatives, and I'm also questioning the, the hastiness that this needs to be done, I mean, the location, uh, the old skate park, there, there are, there are schools nearby, there's, there's Romeo School that has a basketball, uh, I just want to make sure that we do due process, if staff has time to review locations in, uh, this week before then, then that's another thing, I just don't think that that is the case, I just don't want to put on more undue pressure on staff, so I think, um, we could, we could wait a little bit for it, but I would like to see other locations, uh, considered in the report.
All right, it's been moved and seconded by Councilor Beatty and Councilor Henderson. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed, that's carried. Councilor Vazalacos?
Hi, um, we didn't have a chance to talk earlier, because, um, the idea of, we wanted to be nimble and quick on this city patio initiative, and that's, you know, great, we can move ahead with that, but I'm just wondering if we could refer to the city initiatives, um, committee to consider some of the other, um, patio options that people have, have talked about and that the temporary A G C O orders allow, um, just because there may be some restaurants that have no desire to get into a long-term, um, boardwalk kind of setup, but they would be interested in using some of that, the parking spaces for pop-up patios.
Okay. Uh, what we've done, and Ms. Thompson just reminded me, we've had people submit them to the task force, because that other item from Ms. Botary came forward, uh, Ms. Gerber will put it through the task force, and it'll go to the city initiatives committee through there.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose that, cause again, if we're looking at flexibility and options and moving quickly, this one would be a good one.
No problem, thank you. Councilor, uh, Gaffney, then Councilor Clifford?
Uh, my, my item was taken care of right at the beginning, thank you, your worship.
Okay, Councilor Clifford?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I was driving down with my bike and grandson on Lakeside Drive on Sunday, and my grandson was saying, boy, it's great to drive in the middle of the road, and he just got that out of his mouth, and the car came down from Queen Street, came down towards us, and then went up Front Street, so he was on, the, the car was driving on this, uh, when it was closed, and I was just gonna ask our director if there's any chance to have, like, three, um, barriers, so the cars could not go around them?
Through your worship, um, we, we've set up the barriers so that emergency, uh, vehicles could get through, um, uh, easily, um, but we've also had problems where people have gotten out and moved the barriers to drive down on the roads, uh, we were looking for some additional signage, we've talked to the police about policing that area, uh, more often, um, to, you know, and, and asked them if they could start issuing tickets, cause it is a closed road. I'll, I'll talk to staff again to see what we can do, but at the same time, you know, we're trying to balance the closing the roads, but also making it easy for emergency services to get into the area.
Okay. Anything further on the new business section? All right, we're gonna go to the confirmatory bylaw, bylaw eleven, ten, and first and second reading is moved by Councilor Henderson and Councilor Ingram. All those in favor? And that's carried, third and final reading for the confirmatory bylaw, Councilor Clifford and Councilor Gaffney. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Motion to adjourn this afternoon's proceedings, Councilor Bunting and Councilor Burbak. All those in favor? And that's carried, thank you very much.